Getting here Thursday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Our mission is to engage each and every student in rigorous and relevant learning experiences, maximizing achievement through exceptional teaching. Roll call.
Well, here we're called here Coons.
Here.
Westa.
Here.
Brown is absent and student member Hillary Wilson is at us.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Yeah, we got a decent sized schedule here. We'll try to keep on it. Celebrations of achievement.
Yeah, just we got one big one and that's we had a hundred and thirty kids in the senior class and we graduated a hundred and twenty-nine. Walked across the stage. So kudos to the to the staff to get all those kids through.
And the weather held up.
Beautiful day.
Uh, thank you. Focus on learning. We got Zach with student internships. Yeah, I wanted to some some data to share. So over the summer, there's eleven students that are taking part in Kirkwood's internship programs. Sixty hours with the commitment level is. Three of our students are going to be the vet tech internship. All three are at different locations throughout the corridor. We've got one student that is automotive tech intern. We've got one that's a personal trainer intern. We've got two that are sports performance interns. We've got two that are physical therapy interns. We've got one that's a fab using new at a bad shop. And then the last one is world crop production intern C M R quarter fund. So eleven kids will get credit. You know. Yeah. That's great.
What do you think your internship?
The summer ones have been going for a while. I'm not sure it's probably how many that you had.
Five or six years. It's been kind of growing and getting stronger. We partner with Workplace Learning and and which is part of Kirkwood and yeah.
They set up their own. Or they can sometimes workplace learning really likes to kind of have a.
Yeah. And and they're very good at meeting with us and and asking, so are there people that businesses or employers that you'd like us to contact to set set this up? And so we've had in the past kids or, you know, it's not on the list. The kids will say, I'd really like to, you know, maybe try it at this place or this place. So we'll contact Kirkwood, maybe even give them a contact and and they'll take it from there.
How many credits do they get, Zach? Is it? Uh, so my guess would be three. I have a table three or five. Sixty hours. Any other questions? Follows up our kind of all of our stuff. It's opportunities to see stuff.
These are juniors and seniors, Zach.
Going to be.
Going to be juniors and seniors. And we also have. If kids don't want to commit to sixty hours, we also have job shadow opportunities where they can just take a full day. And just kind of get observed before they commit or things like that. So we have job shadow opportunities. And we're working on. Apprenticeships next. And that's what that's what we're currently working on having discussion. An apprenticeship will be where they do coursework. Typically, the C T E coursework through Kirkwood and be employed. Paid employee while they're doing this coursework. And we're we're starting. We entered into a consortium through Grant Wood to start in the healthcare field. And so that's that we're working on putting in place for next year through this consortium. And then, of course, we'll we will want to expand this out to the buildings and trades and other areas, but we're we're getting our feet wet and starting in the healthcare. Anything to add that I missed, Zach?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Zach. I sat data. Josh, yeah, so I gave you a handout. Created some graphs. We now have some come on the first year in eighteen nineteen and obviously we skip next year with school closure and then last year's data. And then this year's data, this year's. Data. Currently, we don't have access to published reports that Pearson usually puts together every year. So basically took all the data from if you have individual student reports in the system. Instead of trying, I'm waiting for some of the information or access codes for I S A S data. Because the parent portal prepares to access for more security purposes. We like last year, we tried to send reports home and then some end up on the floor of garbage or still haven't made it home. So this year I just not going to send those home. We'll try and wait to get that information from Pearson. And then we have a process of the work with Sean Seaton on a process through Power School. That will deliver the access code to all transfer kids. And it worked. We trialed it on our own kids and very good access to our own kids' data, but not this year's data. Right? We haven't received access codes for those kids. So just so you you're aware of that, parents have not received, obviously, I S A S scores for this year. However, I was able to take what they did provide us and break that down into the trends for this year and the data for this year. Look at E L A's. I have the blue lines or eighteen nineteen red is from twenty twenty-one. And then twenty-one, twenty-two and broke down in the grade level under E L A. And then underneath that math on the backside, it got science trends. So it's kind of nice to be able to see now we've got we have at least three data points. We can see a little bit of a trend. And each of those grade levels. And of course, in each of those grade levels, that's a different cohort of students. So then the second document I broke it down into actual four cohorts. And so if you look at the C O, it's class of. Twenty thirty-one. So in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, this year's third grade is class of twenty thirty-one. The line. And if you just if you go straight down, that gives that cohort, that classes, that cohort. So I think the one more complete ones would be the first one would be class of twenty twenty-eight. You go right now, you can see where they were at twenty-one. This year, last year, nineteen twenty, obviously, the effects across that and eighteen nineteen.
So looking at the incoming freshman class, class of twenty twenty-six. In eighteen nineteen, when they first took the I S A S, eighty-one percent of them were proficient in the English language arts. This year, ninety-one percent of them were proficient in English language arts. Makes sense.
Yeah. Can you dig in the data? Like, can you find like there's area that's all struggling in or? Depends on the published reports and what comes up. So it used to be it used to be through Iowa. Assessments for items or whatever they used to call it. They actually, you could really break it down to look at.
Item analysis.
Analysis. This year's the first year, and I'm not sure exactly what this is going to look like in terms of some of those reports because I haven't seen them yet. But this year, I think it was. I think it was. E L A, science. There were two tests that were. Oh. Where it's responsive. So when a student answers a question. Adaptive thinking. Adaptive test where they answer a question, they get it right or wrong, it gives them a different question. So there's a couple of tests that they're trying this year online. And of course, this is the first year we did online assessment for I S A S. So.
And then math wasn't that way?
What's that?
Math was not that way?
I'm trying to remember which one. I want to say.
I would say math would be there if you go to the E L A.
Yeah. That's what we thought made more sense, but I don't think it was. Maybe it made more sense.
If you were going to trial anything, you could trial math.
Yeah, I mean, I don't I don't think it. I think they're right. I'm just trying to remember. Yeah. So I even firm it. Don't worry about.
Those are going to be a question of mine. Was there? Did you think there was a difference between going from paper to online? I mean, they look pretty consistent, but.
Not a pretty not 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 significantly. You know, I think one of the disappointing areas was math for a couple of grade levels. And we and we're meeting with. Now this morning. S I S, their data seemed to be a little lower than we had expected, but we also know it's kind of an implementation implementation dip. For implementing the new math curriculum. There's there were several different variables without any excuses, but trying to figure out what what might have caused that dip. And you know, I think one of the I think one of the areas we discussed was. With the implementation of the new math curriculum, we may not have gotten to every standard that to the level or depth of one to this year, just because it was new. So we may not have hit all the skills and concepts that I S A S tested over. So that was one variable we thought may have impacted that. We're trying. We're looking at how do we correct some of this moving into next year. We know we want to really follow the math curriculum, decided a little developmental math. And conceptual, but then building this gaps for those kids who really are struggling with some of those bigger ideas. So we're working on some plans.
Just just my expertise, especially in the math unit in the lower high and all of a sudden you don't have that.
Yeah.
It depends on how you will stretch.
Yes, that's true.
Into that, you know, for how testing actually the qualities, how we're able to test. That's more probably the studies I've already been placed. The score results will be able to compare the pencil about the math, but actually level that's right. It's like to alter that.
Yeah.
I'm curious, so probably not to take us too much time, but did they give you the cut scores? Are they still producing cuts for so that this is this is this is percent that hit?
This is just percent proficient. Yeah. So this includes proficient and advanced proficient.
Right. So I'm curious to know over time and that you give to the holder, how that percent proficient and below grade level. Do you presume of a low grade level difference that I'm assuming for that scores?
Yeah.
That would help you determine are we moving the needle a lot in buying the graphics? So that.
So that's what I'm hoping that all comes out in our published reports. Yeah.
Right.
So that's what we're waiting. That's what we're waiting for. And especially now, I think now we'll have some trend line data and that's what we'll start to look at. We'll be able to now start also looking growth and look at those test scores and all that. So.
Now we get math data for the same people too. Curious to know about this.
Correct. We haven't done that. That 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 aligner because we only we do that six grades.
Sixth grade, same way, area you do math.
Mm-hmm. But next year, we're going to have fourth and fifth grade. So we felt like there's a need to look at math, especially math where kids are in percent data to make some other decisions for intervention.
That might if you what utilizing that. And then in our passion, that is waiting on date and time. This is just a snapshot. This we traditionally was less than so.
And I know Mike was from year three, or he really used math at sixth grade, grade. So I know at middle school, he dug into that. He got a lot. Probably honestly, the second year that he used to come, they went. Right. Right. Because we have COVID here, which I think we have two two screens that are two significant events. Yeah. I mean, this is just it's really interesting data that I look at. And yes, I agree. It's one snapshot at one moment in time. But did it to generate some interesting question for questions for us as we're looking at, especially math implementation where we are right now. And then as you look at it, we're proving the the year here is pretty consistent in terms of where we are. But like. So I just reading science, we're doing two that were graphic. Two sections, three sections, I think. We need to have three sections, science, and two. So the writing language is not at that and where math is not at that. But I think it's important what you guys are doing, you know, you know, the board has expectations that ever brings a hundred percent. It's just when we're not where we need to be, what are we going to do?
Yeah.
That's always. And I mean, you know, especially since this is your new review of I S A S. But at this time, it's only coming out right now. It's one through one, but it's all good at it. You know, I mean, we're all starting to compare it. So that'll be interesting to to do. And like you said, trying to find those spots like, okay, why did this happen? And and it, I mean, it's obviously it's okay if we miss the mark. It's not it's just not okay to miss twice. You know what I mean? I mean, that's the like, okay, this is not good. You know, I mean, this trend here is the hack, all right, or not. I bet this doesn't mean our story. Sorry. It's more of a show. Those are those are things you have to figure out through this stuff. And you know, you're asking questions and and you guys don't have any analysis stuff. You know, best of, so I see next few. You know, I mean. I don't want us to explain it why, you know, I mean, just because you know, but I'll look at it. Do you do something different for sports? Finding your things that maybe that's.
I mean, and you like, like I would even. Pursuing us to use any of your data and analyze that now more more rates and more often in a way that would give us those early warning. So in even fourth grade math, now we're using that fourth grade math coming into back to school year, I see where we're starting. And then you give them an opportunity to learn. And then I tested again. That tells me how much I need to get to get them back up to grade level. And I can focus and zero in on the response intervention covers for students.
I think one of the things like for third, she's a strong assessment system, reading factor is your bench, primary role is your role models. Given you will receive a little bit in the N W A for reading at middle school level. And then but our biggest challenge is with that. What screener is available? What could be used so that? So this is where we're trying to move the math test out of fourth and fifth grade to see what other information we gather from that. That and talking with Bell and even later, that's kind of a big struggle. What do we use that's going to, like you said, that early warning piece to catch kids early? That's the piece of really sort of like you mentioned before I started here. So this is going to not have a struggle. So it's trying to find that thing that's going to help us dig in a little bit deeper around what the kids.
Also wanted Josh to share. For the admin report. Our profession, we get professional development dollars from the state. It was at one time called teacher quality. Kind of wrapped a lot of things into this. It involves working with a teacher committee, which Josh facilitated. I'm gonna let you how we're spending our money. Yeah.
It used to be the Iowa poor curriculum. There's used to be a fund for Iowa poor curriculum back in the day. And then there's teacher quality and then the state by most for professional development. We still try to call it that, teacher quality professional development. The way we do it and so on is a little bit different than anywhere else. Where teachers, individual teachers get a piece of that pie to support their own individual growth through their own individual professional development plans. And really, the intent, the intent is to share it across these these three different areas. One being district and school. Actually, a couple of areas, district and then school. And I listed out kind of some of the things we've used the money for in the past to support some of our work. And reaching some of our goals and priorities in the district. Then we also have district correct cert certifications. We've had some special education teachers who weren't certified in special education, but now are. Because of hired and shorted or shortage areas. We're using some of these money, these dollars to support one of our teachers so that they can teach concurrent enrollment classes for English language arts. Let's get really close on that. We had hired a eighth grade teacher, math teacher. I'm going to use some of these dollars to help get him up to speak to certify him to give out credit for that at the eighth grade level. And then business courses for another high school teacher. So we're using those dollars to help support that, especially in those areas where we didn't gain time and money. So if we have anyone that we hired, it's going to go back to spell, although we first for those that coursework, that's going to give them a certification. To to offer those classes or courses. And then individual professional development, we use some of those dollars. And again, this is just a summary, but in general, like recertification through for educational exam. There's individual courses or workshops. Again, related to their individual professional development plans and growth goals. And then as well as individual coursework associated associated with a degree of special certifications. We have, we had, we've had over the last several years, several teachers using their individual allocations for credit hours to go towards their their, you know, a master's degree potentially, or even just to get graduate credit so that they can move overall. Move over on the salaries. And currently and historically, or get to currently historically, individual allocations in district have been kind of all over the place. And what we're trying to do the last couple of years is kind of bring some balance. So we have more dollars available to support district level initiatives while still providing teachers those opportunities. So currently, individual teachers have a minimum of two. So every teacher in the district hundred and thirteen, hundred, fourteen teachers will have a minimum. Minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars available to them for their own, whatever they choose professional about up to a maximum if there's. Enough funds available to a maximum next year of five hundred dollars. We've been playing with trying to increase a little bit on minimum the last couple of years. And then this year, we increased the maximum amount that they could use from four hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. And then next year, and that committee that at this time here, this document is together annually. And we had conversations around what are the needs of the district, whether the needs of teachers. And the teacher team advocates for more, you know, more opportunity or more dollars for. Teachers and the district, obviously, we're advocating for more funds or continued funds to support some of the. So we need to handle this to kind of more.
Of all the teachers and these teachers can take a graduate level course. I mean, I think we've got over thirty-some teachers that will be moving over a lane from from taking advanced coursework and things like that. Of all the teachers last year that took a graduate level course, applied for teacher quality money to pay for that through their own individual allotment. Which was up to four hundred and fifty dollars. How many of them were denied? None. Every one of them that.
I think almost everyone, maybe one did get them.
The full four hundred and fifty dollar amount. So a lot of this is going towards, you know, individual directed and district directed professional development for our teachers.
And just a little over, I think, fifty percent of teachers take advantage of that in their role. Carry putty. That's kind of what we for that maybe we talk a little bit each year. How can we continue to get more teachers to take advantage of this of these things, dollars? So there's a thing. Yeah, but so, you know, every teacher has an individual professional development plan required. And during the evaluation, you're like, well, actually, it's every year they have, they should be implementing, monitoring that plan. And that's part of their evaluation of that evaluation process and doing the principle and talk about their individual goals. Really, the ultimate goal is for them to have that individual development plan. Okay, you have you have this resource. So what are some things with some professional development, workshops, conferences, or coursework that would help you reach that goal? And making that one.
And it all needs to be aligned. So we've got our district strategic plan goals, which funnels down to building goals. And how buildings approach those, you know, a different age, you know, and then it funnels down to how how our teachers' individual plans align to that. And so.
Again, we, I think we do it a little bit different than other area schools, other area schools that just kind of leave it that way. And it just was that for possibly an average for all teachers or other professional development. Sometimes school districts don't use their total dollar and what we're trying to do is spread that out. Historically, we haven't done that.
It was discussion we had this year amongst the committee. We we have, we're fortunate to have some dollars. We we carried them over. And so we talked about the one year when we had, well, coming back off of COVID and then we had Duray Joe. Remember, we delayed school five days. We delayed school a week. And so typically, we have teachers three days prior to students. We had teachers five days prior to students. And we got a lot of good out of that. And so we talked about what would it be benefit to use these dollars to bring all teachers back for an additional day? Not three days, but just an additional day prior to school starting for some professional development or kind of to hit the ground running with some things. That was just discussion on the table. Nothing's been decided. It would be a joint decision if we did that. But these are just just other other ways that we've talked about best utilizing those dollars.
You might just have one more thing that I have for I got word today, just on this.
Yeah.
Dad. Jimmy were part of the months to me and all the actions that I was going to take was apply for a grant. We got word today that the district will be awarded the grant, the bucks, two thousand dollars to support social motion. So we're waiting for the next step through the department. It's through the Department of Human Services. It's a COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen. Essentially to fill in the gap as a result of COVID nineteen, there's been some social emotional behavior. Issues or gaps that have. Risk. So this is an effort to support this. So I think it's through the Department of Human Services, the Department of Ed, it's kind of.
Seeing the distribution.
Yeah. Mediator.
So I'm assuming that the brand we discussed about how we tend to use.
Right. And allow it to be for professional development. We talked a lot about developing social motion behavioral leadership teams. And then being able to utilize that money for professional development for that team, for teams within outside the day or during the summer for planning. If over the course of the next few weeks, I'll be communicating that in order for the department to clarify some of our goals, some of our actions. And then I think a huge part of that is coaching, outside external coaching, an external coach helps support some of our work. That all looks like exactly, but it's a it's over a course of two years.
And you said you're going to follow up that those.
Correct.
Achieve.
Right. Yeah. And I laid out some initial rules or thought, but working on.
Because the grant. Was, correct me if I'm wrong. We didn't have to be as precise as like a smart goal, but more general. It allowed us to be a little more general. So now that we're awarded, we'll we'll have those conversations and really dig down and now set more specific goals.
Report back to the H S.
This stipulation of. Of the grant is progress monitoring. So you said the desk set screener data as well as I would serve. I'm not just for survey data. Initial rules.
Is teacher retention related to any of the. Upbringing measures for using those ones?
No, there was no stipulation. My interpretation was a student. Who else? Good stuff. It's good fifty-two thousand. All right, moving on. We got more committee updates. We'll kind of get to ours. I would think we get to regional items. So.
We're kind of get to ours, I would think, get to informational items, so. Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, the grant needs and then. Kind of kind of hold off. Get that policy, that wellness policy of the policy committee. Hopefully in July. Get that role in August. Yes, so. There's recommendations for the wellness, update the wellness policy. I'm gonna do that last month, this month, but I think we get some bigger issues brought. So waiting on that. I'll give that information to both. What the changes are. What's that? So you're just aware of it and the changes really.
All right, moving on consent agenda items, anything in there? If you just got questions worth or be pulled out? If not, I'll indicate a motion. All those decisions, if I'm not saying I. Action items, we get the pre-bond referendum. That's with ISG. We talked about it last week. We look for a little more clarification.
Nathan on. Let me check my email just real quick.
If not, we probably. Information line so that if he comes back on.
Okay.
Jump him back.
Let's move on. We'll we'll jump back. Yeah.
Get it back on informational items.
Oh, wait, he's on, but you have me muted.
Is he is he attending via phone?
Maybe just call him.
Something popped up on your screen.
Did it? Hey, I'm here. We can use we can use the phone if need be.
Sounds good. Sorry about that.
I'm gonna add you to some speakers here so that the group can hear you. Don't got me the right adapters. Okay.
You got me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, fantastic.
Loud and clear. Okay. Hey, thanks for being with us tonight. You originally, you know, when we talked to you, just to recap a little bit. About services from ISG to kind of help us with the pre-refendum and and bond support. In the areas of community meetings, community survey, referendum support and master planning. And that was a, I think in the area of up to. Thirty thousand dollars, just depending on time and hours and investment and things like that. The last time and I'm just gonna try to summarize our conversations. The last time we talked as a as a district. We felt pretty good about where we are with master planning and, you know, where our facilities are and 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 that. We really. Talked about maybe more support in the area of the survey, the referendum, support and the community meetings. But we had some questions about maybe, did I say that wrong, Jamie? Okay, okay. Could you just kind of talk about maybe those three areas, the community meetings, the community survey and the and the referendum support?
Sure. So from that piece of it, I don't know if you guys see kind of that timeline. Chief, but just to kind of explain some of the pieces that go along with that, when we typically do a referendum. We will oftentimes do it in a few different ways. The way that I would see with with your crew would be to have, you know. A series of community meetings where we present kind of what the project is. Answer questions, show the need to the community and that would be, you know, probably maybe three different meetings to be able to. Give people enough opportunity to be able to jump into a to a meeting and be able to. Get the understanding of what that project is. And then so that would be kind of what the community meetings would involve. Now, that wouldn't be the only meetings. It really depends on. The level of support you guys are seeing within the community. You know, if it's a community that's. A little more on the divisive side and you feel like, golly, this is gonna take a lot, a lot more effort. That's where, you know, there might be additional meetings, meetings with individual groups, things like that. And oftentimes, that's something that. That maybe one of you guys leads or and and we provide, again, now we're talking about the the referendum support where we're providing any collateral. So just handouts, emails, website, things like that to help kind of boost the message on some of that information. Which is part of the reason why we have up to the thirty thousand because it's until we dive into this with you guys and and get a a real understanding of. The level of effort that's gonna be needed with the community that you guys within your community. It's it's kind of hard to say. So that's kind of what those pieces are. So the the referendum support is is the regular collateral. It's also. Updates to you guys, the board, and then. Phone calls, things like that to be kind of helping strategize and think through ways to help get the message out and think through. How to to best kind of describe kind of the needs and and get that out. Some of that can involve where we're also needing to put together images. And again, depending on the level of effort, we've gone anywhere from passing a bond referendum with without any images at all where. We're just kind of describing what the needs are to putting together a rendering and and plan. So that people can have a full understanding. It really just depends on on the need that we see within the community to help them and us understand. That makes sense. The the survey oftentimes can help identify some of that. So the survey and and some of you guys can meet Sue Peterson. Sue Peterson, that was kind of her expertise for many years and and we've. Overran and have her work for company now to be able to do that. She did this. For a company called School Perceptions over in Wisconsin and has done it on some two hundred different bond referendums. And these surveys are are not your typical just survey. It's actually almost as much an education piece as it is. A way for us to learn also from the community. So she puts together questions based on. Really the information from the board and the needs and helps kind of as well as, I know you guys are, I believe you're working with Piper Sandler, so. Also working with Piper Sandler to understand the financial piece of it. And then she lays out this survey with the the questions or some of them are as much as a page long where it really kind of walks through and describes. Some of the needs and and whatnot and then follows that up with a question to help. Understand where the district is and so where the community is within the district. And what we can gather from that is is oftentimes what direction the the community is wanting to go. For the project, you know, if there's maybe some concern about whether they're gonna support a gym or how many classrooms, whatnot. I know you guys are. You guys are pretty specific to what you're going with, but that helps us then identify where that support is. The other piece that also she can help identify is is really is really what the community can stomach from a bond referendum standpoint. So. What amount, you know, if we're gonna go for for ten million, we'll say, can the community stomach ten million or? Really, they can't and we need to be thinking about a different amount and and what what really what really is that amount? She can pretty well identify that with her information and and through the survey. So that that would be what that survey piece is. What other pieces are you kind of wondering on that? Maybe I didn't touch on.
Nathan, is that correct? Nathan, I this is Cassie Rokel. I have some questions about the survey in particular. So you had mentioned it was a one-page long survey kind of describing the needs and there were probably a lot of questions there. In in my history of surveying and doing market research. You're gonna lose some respondents if the survey is too long for them to respond to. Do you have any sort of guarantee about? What you think could be a good sampling within the community that we would be able to achieve with the dollars that we can spend?
Yep, I wish Sue was not able to be on today. She can speak way, way better to me than that and if if maybe it'd be best, I could have her. Respond to that question and share an email with the group. She has some pretty specific data on the sampling she likes to see and it's. You know, we're anywhere from, to be honest, it's like twenty to forty percent. I believe is what her numbers are that that she likes to see from a response standpoint. One of the reasons. She feels pretty good about even with getting it out there that. Because the survey is getting out to people who may not even fill out the survey, there is still people who will read it and and learn more about it and grow interest. From it has always been her response on the on the survey piece of it.
Are we taking any qualitative information that would help inform the quantitative survey that we would do? Are we going or have we done any like? One-on-one interviews first to help inform those questions? Are we just only engaged up our expertise because you've done this in several?
No, no, this this would be this would be us sitting down with with your team. And talking through those pieces of it to have a full understanding of the project and then also. Speaking with Piper Sandler to have a full understanding from their side from a financial piece. So it's it's not just her expert, it's it's her expertise and how she assembles it, but it's it's really looking to to the district to formulate those questions and. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that survey, I think I you got a valid point on the survey just. It does nothing else but awareness. And the interest in first the interest of what essentially.
Yeah.
When you said that you will be able to gather what the. Stomach in terms of the line.
Any other questions?
Well, I think from a standpoint of the board and just the district ready to be open, this would be a big project. So. You know, I know these guys have been this, that's what they do for a living. So that's one of our feedbacks is being open, honest. Community wants to know what's going on. We want them to be a part of it. So. Nathan, I appreciate your time on the call. If you have other questions, I think you can. Hang up.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. I'll I'll talk to you soon.
Sounds good. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else that comes? You know, the thing to use is I get lots of questions and looks before like. When we're gonna start building, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to get our surveys back and everybody's like. Continue the service, you know what I mean? That's my only thing because I I feel like there's support for this, though I don't want to miss, so we have to go out and ask.
So it's a whole management for this, but then.
Right, for sure. Yeah, for sure. That's I mean, that's how it's always been. Well, I think they're gonna want to be open too about facility stuff, right? Upgrades on whatever building it is and whatever facility it is. Right. I heard that and you can speak to it too on the your side and a lot too and.
Yeah, so everybody's ready for us to add on. Media school, we have a lot of other things to that.
Yeah.
So you know, you know exactly what we're gonna do with. Wait, you or how we're gonna do, what we're gonna do and what we want to do for now with this. There's a lot more since we're purchasing the property now than only adding on to there. So. Before the massive, I was thinking, you know, here you go. But we know a part of what we're doing, but I don't know now if that is something maybe that I'm not pushing. As much as I was before, just because we. A lot of things that need attention. Yeah, the high school is relatively new, a lot of parts of it are new, their media school. The middle school, those are in great shape, but now since we'll be moving some things around and we have like you, that needs some attention. Those are all things that we. Don't really know exactly what.
So would we be open or going full service with it? Were you saying all?
Yeah, I mean, before. My mindset was we know what we want to do. But now there's a whole other, you know, forms and a lot of options and.
I do think it's important with the community here, right? So they can then, I mean, if they have those meetings, it's good.
Well, it's a great point because, you know, I'm just like, oh, it's a world of the old, not kept out, but but. You know, if we're gonna look at other facilities for other things and, you know, if we're gonna do something to the bus bar and check up with the.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, can we charge it up together? Well, if it's gonna get bigger, then we have to have this.
Yeah.
Because we need to find out the charts for how many we can get.
Yeah.
Want to get it, but what all, you know, the community wants and needs and, you know, I I have heard. You know, my kids have been in like for a while, but I heard the word tired. You know, like those, like people tired.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. Yeah. Now that we've built other buildings, it's more noticeable. Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
This, we're thinking about making this a little bigger or a lot bigger, you know.
We want to do what we're right. Right, for sure. And we know growth is coming.
And our communities somewhat different than when we were building before. There's a lot more. Different types of houses and things and stuff and. You know, in in different areas and growing efforts in different parts of ideas and and so I think. Think when you were, think when in my, when the intellectual, all honestly, we were really on the S I S, why we need so much money? We already got the tone, we already, you know, we're looking at this like. It might be this, it might be that, might be that.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we're good, we basically approve up to thirty as the document says.
In my, in me and my buddy I had earlier.
Would would you like Nathan to follow up with Sue to get that email out? Okay, okay. Would would you like Nathan to follow up with Sue to get that email out? Okay, okay.
My question.
Okay.
It wasn't like we're sending on a survey monkey and and.
Yeah.
It's not a cookie cutter, they're coming in.
Right, like we don't, like we really don't have the liberty to ask for that, so that's not in the case here, so.
Okay.
Motion approved.
I'll motion to approve up to thirty thousand dollars and I'll see.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Rokels. Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right. Thanks, Dave, for setting that up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, also we have purchase in there.
Yeah. 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 And speaking of purchase, we'll have to talk about maybe setting up a time. Um a work session either right before a meeting or and and go down there and and just walk through it. I took Brian down there today and he was amazed at how much bigger it is when you're standing inside that building. How much bigger it really is. And then when you're standing on that, there we're gonna have a lot of space. Yeah, inside and out, Brian thought, he goes, I I bet we could park all twelve vans in this part of the building if we wanted to indoors. I mean, it's it's deep and it's wide. Yeah, yeah.
That's cool. Well, it's funny when uh that got published that we were gonna have a meeting on land purchase. I got a bunch of phone calls. I'm sure you did too. Where's land, where's land, where's land available around Solon?
Hmm.
So, no, but thanks for everybody's hard work on that. That's a, that'll be a nice deal for the district, so.
Well, it's, it is, it has a purpose and it also has so much potential. Just that.
Yeah.
All right, informational items, uh I saw the updates, we got elementary SAS, middle school and high school handbooks.
Yeah, and I think each each building just summarized just like a one pager of any changes that were made. They identified that on 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 a page that you should have access to. Did you, you separated them out, so.
The only one I don't have a page for is the high schools because they had made so many changes in the past. The only thing that's different is the calendar, so that's why there wasn't an updated one because there's no changes.
Um Holly and um Mel actually worked together. So, yeah, no, we gave it to Holly and she actually worked with Mel and those two because they wanted to make sure that. They were aligned and it was flowed and language and expectations and things like that. So they did a good job, spent a lot of time working together on that.
What about the B A S P? Provided some suggestions about B A S P in general.
They were made, uh I I can, is that not B S A P? Did we approve that earlier?
A couple of weeks, a couple of months ago.
We approved that earlier and we made those changes that you suggested. Um not only if a few changes within the handbook, but our own procedural changes as far as. Um we've got iPads for staff that when kids are checking in and we've converted things to more technology and things like that, so.
The reason she always does this earlier is because when she opens up for summer, it's summer, yeah, so she's in the school, yes.
Uh emergency safety review.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly um. Just to let the board know, I know right at the very, very end of the school year, um that incident occurred in Texas. It 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 always puts, you know, makes people nervous and things like that. And and to stop and think, well, what are we doing? Um just kind of a brief overview, things that are are already in place. Um you know, we went through Alice training, um our at our admin team is have all been through Alice training. Uh not all of our staff, because we did this seven years ago. Uh good core of them have, but you know, you've seen our staff change. Uh we take those principles um which were research-based from Alice training. And those are reviewed by building principals with their staff annually. And then, just like with fire and tornado drills, we have to do so many per semester. Uh we ask each building principal once each semester within their building to do a drill. With that's age-appropriate with depending on their building. And so uh we do a lot of scenarios. And so um our principals, you know, maybe it's a high school homeroom or seminar where. Uh every teacher will have a scenario that they'll read out and then they'll discuss. Uh response with with students. And so uh we don't actually go through evacuation or run here or um. It 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 really brings too much angst to staff and students in with some when we really go live like that. So but we do discuss, we do review uh with our staff and our students annually as far as procedures. Um we do have, again, in our emergency preparedness plan, we have specific procedures and roles for staff. We don't communicate those out, but those are reviewed with staff. We have points where they're to go, you know, through um our partnership with Hills Bank. And you know, with people using their credit card, we get a kickback of that. We we've bought um AEDs with those and we've also, we purchase uh back, safety backpacks for every classroom. That will keep student rosters, class rosters and all the emergency stuff needed in those uh that they hang by the doors. Um we have, of course, all the radios throughout the district and we just purchased new ones. That are coming in, that came in today. Um our remodel projects have all uh, the new builds have had that feature with. You enter through the office before going into the main. When we remodeled the high school, we added that. Uh Lakeview has that on it, uh so we have safe entrances uh that direct all traffic into the to the office. Um and then we do have a great relationship with Johnson County. Um many of our principals have personal phone numbers, cell phone numbers of our uh deputies. Uh earlier in the spring, um we had Lieutenant Wis Wisman, is that how you say his last name? And Lieutenant uh Ruddish, both members of our community and I believe both have kids in our system. They actually met with our admin team prior to this happening. Uh following and and we talked a lot about the procedures uh that we have in place. And and they gave us some feedback and and some suggestions and. Um but since that point too, we've also set up a time, these two will uh in August. Meet with each building principal and walk through their buildings, walk and talk about the plan that they have in place. Uh as they're walking their building, since each building's so unique in how it's set up. And then these two will also attend each of the pre-service uh back-to-school faculty meetings at each of the buildings. To talk and review and to answer questions and things like that too.
I think it's gonna be important that if we're going to, you know, we need to, you know, we need to, you know, parents and events.
Yep. And and we've talked about that. It's not our front doors that's the issue, it's the prop doors that's the issue. Yeah. Yep, yep.
Reading awareness and confidence. Or what?
It's gone out, yeah, and and I think the bullets that I read, that has gone out in a memo prior to the community. But it's always asked again following and it's a national incident. So we'll we'll send out, we'll send out the the memo to start the year. Um alerting parents, just letting them know. And then also with the addition of uh Lieutenant Ruddish and Wisman. And and their close ties and partnership and the time that they're gonna spend with our faculty prior to start the year.
And I know we all that probably are some concerns about immediately following this in Texas. To to provide that insurance to the community, um whether it's a rationale for not involving that.
Um. I'd only been contacted by one person and I responded directly to that person. And then another person did contact the whole board. Um we we had two days of school left. That was probably, whether that was good judgment or poor judgment, that was just with that into the school year. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we'll start the, we'll start the school year with with um a back-to-school and and our our. Our, some of our emergency preparedness will be in that memo. Yeah, just to reassure them. Yeah.
More enjoy this part. You know, they have some separate church or town.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and you know, it's, there's now and socially, a lot of children, you know, and so. I mean, any place we can bring information.
Mm-hmm.
Just people who know each other, you know, that just would support our teachers and students and the initiation. Obviously, that the little, small, the ground church, but I don't know.
Well, I think that's one thing I kind of think covered. We got a lot that look at community, I mean, there's some down our street. Uh the randomness of those spot checks where they walk through the building and I think that's good, that people don't always know or. Or are aware it's happening, but yeah, I mean, I think we've talked about a couple of different times. Even though we don't have a police force in town, I mean, they're they're essentially here and they're not in Iowa City and they're not, you know, twenty minutes away. So, yeah, I look forward to hearing that report uh in August, September, so. Uh moving on, uh the exciting stuff, five oh eight point two open times, nine oh five point one, community use of school, district buildings. All right, we've been working pretty hard on this. I guess I can start a little bit. I I did prior to that meeting, talk to as many coaches as I could, quite a few of them. Um tried to kind of get a sense of, all right, what's going on here? Uh my take from what I heard, you know, every season's different based on, you know, when games are, you know. Wrestling tournaments, all that. Um I I think in their judgment, like when they look at each, you know, season as a whole, when they're in-season. They're doing the things that I think we're asking from a mental health standpoint, giving them breaks, giving them time off. Uh the hard part is as busy as these kids are, everybody's pulling in from, you know, when I look at my season and here it is. All these other things you can't control, I think are what are kind of causing problems. So whether it's communication that needs to improve, um. A lot of other things, I mean, Zach, you can allude to some stuff, Cassie, Jamie, you're at that meeting, so um. I've seen the schedules and it's difficult, right? We're we're talking about facility upgrades, we talked about fifteen, twenty years ago, we've got a lot more kids out for stuff. You know, you're trying to run through baseball in the offseason in Lakeview with two batting cages, probably not the safest place. But you're trying to run through all those softball and baseball kids, it doesn't, you don't do it in two hours. It's, you know, four-hour deal, so I don't know, anything you guys want to allude to?
Yeah, so I was at the meeting and I think um the feeling I got one meeting. I was under the understanding that we're gonna put one busy kid's schedule up, so all this is just. So they could see what this kid really does and that didn't happen. So I feel like all the coaches went into this with the mindset of, I have to defend my activity. So it wasn't as productive as I was hoping it would be. And there there were some good ideas thrown out, but the the some of the coaches in my group. It felt like we're just defending their their sport. Um and they didn't understand what the purpose of this movement was. But I feel like they they came into it and maybe we could do talk to them ahead of time or for whatever reason. And I feel like they came in, they're there to defend their sport and I don't think that a lot of them understood. We didn't show them the kids' real schedule, so they're saying, but my, but my kids want to do my thing. My kids want to do my thing, so it wasn't like, maybe they want to do these other things too. And kind of the biggest issue is the offseason pull on the kids. So I think during the season, the coaches do a pretty good job of trying to to give the breaks. But then when it's their offseason, they're not of the mindset, or these kids are doing all these other things. Um so. Yeah, I don't, I feel like we, that wasn't a real productive team. I was a little disheartened when it was over.
So Adam and I had the opportunity to take the the notes from that meeting that everybody moved up. Zach provided that to Adam and I, sat down with Casey, Zach and Davis on Friday, so last Friday. And uh my takeaway from that conversation. Was was that the decision to just literally eliminate Sundays. From the calendar was was a decision that was rushed in too quickly. And I can, and I can understand that, um and that there was concern about, do we have enough information and data to really support it? Support the decision like that, which I also can understand very well. Um but I also believe, or I also believe that, to your point, there is a. There is the, in the spirit of what problem we're trying to solve here was not a little overstepped. And that is that these kids are ones that are busy, maybe not the ones that are not. The ones that are busy are feeling very poorly in multiple directions and they're feeling they can't say no. And they're feeling they owe it to their parents, society, mother, to really be all they know. But we want to make sure that they feel like they can go back to. Uh or or start to feel like they have a little bit of breathing room and space and time where we can allow it. And um and we know that from several different studies out in the market that says when you overschedule students. They increase the use of anxiety, increase the social, you know, issues, increase the use of drugs, alcohol, and you name it. And so they turn to other things that will help alleviate some of the pressure that they're feeling. From from these scenarios. And so that was what we're trying to eliminate and try to come up with a solution for. So um we walked away with that, understanding, we all had a common understanding of the problem we're trying to solve. Perhaps we need to think about how we best solution it, and studying the data over the course of the year. Being that the offseason was the, what was, the offseason scheduling was the one that seemed to be the most concerned, the problem that it. And summer also being equally or as concerning as perhaps the offseason. The second thing we also needed to do was we needed to accurately reflect what the policy is. To what is actually happening. And so in that meeting, it was, in on that Friday, it was like, okay, so what is actually happening? And we got a sense that we're scheduling on Sundays more than probably what is necessary. And that we are, we are, we are allowing for variances on Wednesdays past six P M. More than probably what is necessary. And so we wanted to rein that in and provide recommendation. For reducing the number of contact hours on a Sunday from two to five. And then, or two to six perhaps. And then really sticking to our own limit on the, the Wednesday being that no contact after six. We did have a discussion about, you know, what is the timeframe this whole year? Is it only the calendar, academic calendar year? Uh, and we have some things that are bubbling up from the state in terms of what baseball can start and how many actually sports are in season at what time in the month of May. Um, and the concerns about that and, and to see what we need to do. But the other day was certainly something that we needed to have more data on to support. A longer term vision of what we want to offer for these students. Giving them an opportunity to participate in these activities. And also being able to give them an opportunity to get. So. So Davis provided a little bit of that, right? Some feedback or add a few.
Yeah, no, I thought it looked pretty good. Yeah, I think that just axing the one day would be really hard just because of all the stuff that's in motion. You know, even some of the other stuff like. Trap shooting and archery and there's stuff that does happen on Sundays there that's a little bit out of our control. So to totally shut some stuff down would be tough. You know, I've had a lot of talk with different, you know, even people in the community too. We want our kids to be busy and do everything. We're kind of getting to a point where you can't be involved in everything. Right? Like you almost have to start making a little bit of a decision. I can't have three things going on in one season. That's probably not possible. Even though some of these kids are trying to do it. So. You know, even though I kind of referenced our family, there's certain things we have to say no to and just start it. It's not possible. You gotta pick and choose. It's, you know, this or that. Because you're just gonna run yourself ragged. So. Yeah. If we can clean up the policy and that's kind of what, when I reached out to those guys and some of the coaches. That was my intent was, I think it felt ganged up on. What did we do wrong? We're, you know, defending, which I didn't. I was saying, hey, the reason this is coming to light is because we have conflicts in our policy. That we're on the policy committee and we found out this isn't add up. So that's the reason for this. We want everybody to kind of come together and communicate and just say, hey, how do we make this work? So that was kind of why I called and then they said, well, you know, I don't feel like it's that bad in season. Here's what my schedule looks like. That's what they kind of talked about. But that was the main thing. We, our policies didn't match up. We had to clean it up. And so. Yeah, hopefully if we can. We need to discuss it. Tweak it a little bit, but that's kind of what we came out of after talking with Zach, Casey, Davis, the meeting that you guys attended, kind of what, what was a. We call it meeting in the middle, but just a, a way to make things work and then document and try to find ways, all right, where are we stepping out of line on a Sunday? Where is this necessary or unnecessary? And kind of working through it that way.
So the highlights, it's on here, the highlighted is kind of that meeting in the middle that Adam just referred to. I'll just walk through some of the updates that I felt. Were pretty reasonable. Like, it's not only about keeping a good community relations. It's also about ensuring that our students have offered adequate screen time. That are not, you know, completely scheduling them day to day, hour to hour, every time. I mean, it's, that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. And then from the first day of school into May first. So that's open for, you know, that's, that's what we talked about on Friday. And that was as a result of understanding that there was. I think I have my notes here around soccer.
Baseball, softball.
Baseball. There's golf tracks, soccer and baseball all hitting in the book. And that. Typically you're in. Two of those things, potentially sometimes three, if you're involved in track itself or golf track and baseball. And scheduling of that became a concern. For that aspect on Wednesdays.
Cause generally speaking, according to Casey and what the schedule looks like, you're usually having a track on, you know, anywhere from a Thursday, a Tuesday, Monday, Friday. Wednesday's kind of that night where they'll have practice called track practice or golf. And then they're waiting for those practices to get over before they can begin. And because they moved the season up, they're starting a competition. Some of these kids aren't, they're, they're using Wednesday night as a kind of a solid practice time to get some. Baseball and softball. Cause a lot of those kids are taken out through competition or, you know, cause we talked about what about the mornings as well. Some of those kids aren't going to want to come in and do a baseball practice and then have a track.
You know, having a day to coach and track.
Yeah.
You know. You know, I. Right? Because we're trying to see how busy kids are. We don't even look at a kid's schedule. I've got some oversight and I'm not happy about it at all. Cause the coaches don't know how busy a kid is. If you saw, every coach says, well, I'm not. You're all about. Right? Cause I had a kid who couldn't pitch, may not get to pitch because he was at State Ball. What? Right? We can balance these kids' lives, but coaches have to be reasonable. Right? And, and a first baseball game should never trump a last trap. You know what I mean? Yes, they bump into each other. It's the first frigging baseball. Right? It's the last trap to go to state meet. Right? Those are non-negotiable for me. You know what I mean? And these are the conversations that need to be met. Right? We have people who say, oh, I'm fine with this. You know, when I'm out of season to do this, oh, but I'm in season, I'm not okay with this thing. Right? These are all people who want the right things, but they all want just what they want. Right? Everyone has to hear it. Right? And that's the part I think was frustrating. And when I hear back from tables where people say, oh, we'll work around this new schedule. We've always done it in the past. Okay? No, that does not fly with me ever. Right? Basically telling the board that we don't, we don't have any policies. There's no teeth on this policy. Right? What are we going to do with it, right? Right? What, what if somebody starts practicing on Sunday? What do we do? We have a policy. What's the punishment? Right? I mean, there's, I mean, this is, these are the things, it's the kids aren't the problems and the coaches aren't the problems in the sense that. They don't want what's best for the kids. In every sport's different, right? Basketball, baseball, skill sports, right? They need more time, right? Or do they need supervised time? Right? You are a good basketball player because you are intrinsically motivated to be a good basketball player. Most of your time you got better offseason was on your own. I'm more about providing open opportunities for the kids to come and work on their games on their own. You know what I mean? Stop having coaches there coaching them, you know, because those, those are the things that they feel the pressures to have to be there. Right? When kids choose to be, I, I have lots of examples, right? My son's coming into sophomore year, AJ. He wants to practice footwork and do all this stuff. And then press what seemed that they're down there, right? They're working every day. Who sees them down there? The Wegmans and Winterman. Now they're down there working in the mornings, you know what I mean? And pretty soon they're doing one-on-one wide receiver drills to get, you know, I mean, it's just, that's the stuff against championships. No coaches, kids on their own. We all think as coaches that it's, we're the ones that drive. When they drive from in here, no matter what, it's. Music, if it's whatever, but we don't provide those opportunities for. Everybody has to have them because if I'm not coaching them, they're not getting any better. I think that's untrue. You know what I mean? And I think we need to see what it, what it really looks like. Cause no coach in the summer is purposely trying to grind a kid. But a kid goes to Winning Edge and then he goes to football, then he goes to baseball and then basketball wants it. You know, I mean, I remember kids from that baseball would leave the game and come right to Open Gym. For basketball and they'd be getting yelled at because they were, and they had Winning Edge that morning. You know what I mean? And the, the coach is yelling at them because they're not giving effort. What? I mean, if they don't understand what's going on, right, to these kids. You can't have high expectations if you're the fourth person that day that they've done stuff. Right? It's, you know, and so why can't these coaches talk to each other and be like, all right, I'm going to just do easy shooting on this, I have them for it. Okay, baseball, you're going to do grounders and all this stuff, but I'm going to run through a little bit of a basketball, you know what I mean? So we start to balance out the athletes. Now, we're not even talking fine arts yet, you, you know what I mean? So those are the parts for me is. We do things well. That, that meeting was not done well. Okay? Not done well at all, in my opinion. Okay? Cause we know what we're looking for. Right? It doesn't have to be a day off. All the coaches I talked to said, great idea. We need more time. Okay?
Dan, who was the directive from the board?
The directive was to find the time for the day off.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep, that was the directive.
See what we could find to be do through that meeting. What, what was identified?
What was identified that it doesn't work?
There were days, people put days down.
Right, for sure.
Sunday or Wednesday is a day.
Right.
We have to pick. You have to pick. That's the job. From my opinion.
Right.
I, I would agree. There was not a lot of purpose or real discussion around how busy kids are.
Right.
They all know, one hundred percent they.
They do not know.
Yes, they do.
They do not know. They, they know what their kids do for them.
And they know what their kids are involved in and they know.
They kind of do.
They do.
But they don't.
The only way this is gonna happen.
If they had a thorough understanding of what these kids really do on season, offseason, everything. They wouldn't have been there if they really care about these kids. They wouldn't have been there fighting for their activity.
Because they, they really feel like there's no possible way we can take a day away, which absolutely there's no doubt in my mind. It's gotta be set and we have to do it. And that's it. That's what's gonna happen. Now, is it gonna take a year to get there? That's okay. We can do that. But I think we can do it now. We, you know, piss people off and. We'll still, we'll still work through it and figure out how we're gonna do it the right way. But that was the purpose of that meeting.
For sure. For sure. But I think it's important because like not everybody sees what everybody's doing. Is there a purpose in trying to bring these kids out? And I'll be honest with you, until you've had a kid running through it, both sides, you don't get. Okay, no offense, but you have no idea. When, when coaches are pissed at them, you know, you didn't play well today or where were you? And they have other things in the summer like AAU and that stuff too. You know what I mean? And then, you know, they got all this stuff and yes. I would call a basketball coach, because I mean, and say, they're not coming today. You know what I mean? Be mad at me, you don't be mad at them, you know, but they still pay the price. You know, for me, we need to, and I agree with you, we could figure that, that absolutely. But the coaches at top who said, help us, let it, give us a year to settle this out and have more time together. You know what I mean? And, and my thing is, everybody's got a gift. Right? We don't need to cook them as hard as we're cooking them to win. And in fact. As you know, okay, you play for a guy who overcooked kids, right? Did you play better or worse? Worse, right? Okay? Oh, we didn't, we almost won last year, so we're gonna practice even harder this year, right? That's the mentality. And pretty soon you get the lob and initial returns. You know, and we get close with our kids with that, right? And so my biggest thing is that we find a time that these kids can have off. Or that they can have permission not to come to stuff, not to help them out of. If they're doing school activities or the family chooses.
Some of those guys have my conversation and maybe didn't come on the meeting. That's what I felt is. When it's offseason, they do take, they understand that the in-season stuff takes precedent. So if you can't make everything, it's part of this communication to say, hey, I can't count, I'm exhausted, I'm. You know, I've got a family deal.
Sure.
You know, I think the expectation you have to be of every single thing maybe gets overblown a little bit. I mean, I could be wrong and I, I would go through it, but that's what these coaches were saying. It's a part of this communication. We just want to make sure, you know, we do something wrong or there's something wrong with this unit or, you know.
Well, the biggest thing is who's in control of their communication with their kids? They are. Right? Cause hey, you don't need to come in and talk to them with a standard. And then next week, all right, kids got home late from Center Point, it's midnight, they're not going to be at Winning Edge. Perfect. That communication works great, right? Those sort of things that the coaches need to communicate with each other, what's going on or otherwise.
Yep.
You know what I mean? And that's not hard. Right? We all communicate with each other, you know what I mean? Teachers take kids in and out of classrooms and work with them and communicate with each other. I don't know why this is so difficult, but everyone's entrenched. I can't give up one minute with these kids.
So are you hoping that the coaches, directors and sponsors. Reach that conclusion and find a day? Or is it o- over, over the course of the year as they realize, as they communicate? That they, that they come to. The same. That, that, that we've talked about here, hey, kids need a day off. So I think what Zach was saying is, we could just set it, we could just say, they're gonna, they're gonna get this day off. Or are we wanting the coaches to come to that conclusion? So at this time next year, they've identified the day off. Are we gonna, is the end result a day off regardless? Uh, uh, is that what we're going for? Is the end result a day off?
The end result is have kids not be able to run.
So it might not be a date.
Goal is to do what we say we.
Yeah.
We say we do and care about these kids. That's my end result goal. I'm not sure how we. Get there completely. If we have to say a complete day off, then that's what we have to do. But I think this is a way bigger issue than policy, I think. This is a lot deeper and a lot more to it than policy. We're not gonna be able to solve it all with policy. But I think we can do something with policy to at least alleviate it a little bit. And then maybe we figure out how we force coaches to. See kids' schedules, force coaches and sponsors and people to communicate with each other. We have this May first to work around a season that has a lot of sports. That's not helping our kids not be overwhelmed. That's helping them be overwhelmed because we stopped it at May first because there's lots of sports then and we'll just work our policy around. Letting the season be overwhelmed. I don't think that makes sense. That's not what we're saying we want to do. And there were people that I talked to that said, summer is worse than during the school year. It's offseason for a lot of things, but all the off seasons are going and the kids are even more overwhelmed in summer. Why are we stopping it at May first? Because we want to work around. Letting that season overwhelm our kids.
So.
So I understand that if a long act schedule, some, if, if, we can't say, no, we're not going to participate in this long act. Because it's our Wednesday and that's off limits.
That's already put in.
Yeah, there will be exceptions. And I understand that for scheduled games that are outside of our control. But if there are things that are within our control, it needs to not be an exception. And I don't, I think this should be all here, not until May first. Why are we working a policy around a section where our kids are going to be overwhelmed and while we're gonna let them be overwhelmed during that season? We'll just switch the policy so they can then.
You, you helped me clarify my question. So what, what you said helped me clear. So. Can we reach? What we, what the board wants? And you know, that's not to overwhelm our kids, to give them that mental and physical rest that they need. Can we reach that? You know, other than, is there another solution other than a day off? Could it be reached in another way? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. And, and I think the answer to that is.
Okay, okay.
Well, that's, so part of what we talked about too in there, in that meeting was kind of contact hours. That was the thing to kind of monitor, right? Your in-season, how much, what's your other contact hours outside of season? That's one of those things that Casey and I think everybody's gonna work on is those outside touches of what that looks like. Cause again, we talked about the in-season coaches, hey, I'm fine, I'm good. And I knew, I look at the schedules, I think they're very generous. Football in general, I think he does a good job of trying to, you know, give them enough rest, get them ready to go for the next game. Again, it might be one of those where we're tracking some of the, the hours and say, all right, what's the real problem here? Look at this, look at what this kid has going on, not just sports, but fine arts and everything else that's happening that night. And they're getting done at nine, ten o'clock and back, right? And then what, what does the summer look like? So. I'd be in favor of not saying that this is set in stone. This is exactly the way it is. To your point, I think it's a, called a meeting in the middle because they want a little time. I think if we just said, Sunday, you're done. That would be a little rushed. But if we can give them a chance and monitor and track stuff, it, it may help us, you know, come back and look twelve months from now, are we doing the right thing? Or do we need, just need to pull Sunday out together and say it's on, off table?
So exactly what Adam said, exactly what you said. I, I, I'm never of the opinion that let's move the policy in force order. Let's put teeth in it and let's make sure we consider changing the policy also, you gotta please. So there are two problems we're trying to solve here. And one is, we gotta get the policy put up. This is, this is our best attempt to reflect.
What's happening.
What's happening. And the second thing that came from that is in the spirit of what we're trying. And the second thing that came from that is, in the spirit of what we're trying to achieve here. Not to say that the day off is the solution, it is a solution to a problem. But we need more data to support what is the best solution for our kids, for our sponsors, for the people that are effectively impacted. Bad decision, and what is, this setting what this is, and then being allowed the time and space to track it. Monitor what is actually happening, gives us a little bit more time. Truly, we all think, from the information we have, that the offseason and summer is the biggest culprit. This allows us to change the policy if we need to before next summer. If it can't be resolved, then another policy.
We have more and more programs that are in that college program.
Hmm, yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And colleges have limitations on contact.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? There there's. I don't know if I know if you're my kids, you know, there's just has to be time to keep watching the ball.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Because, and I mean, and I'll be very honest with you, Christmas, this is true. This was less of a problem in the middle of the year, because people were practicing in the summer. We left AAU racing.
And they didn't lift, they didn't believe in lifting.
Right, and so it was as we got in the road, now the hard part of this, okay, where I'm coming from. We never practiced Saturday or Sunday.
Mm-hmm.
Room forty-one street.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean, and we had some great athletes, we had some, our kids were all fresh. You know what I mean? And we gave them the game film, and they watched it together. You know what I mean, some of this intrinsic stuff, a lot of people weren't here for it, you know what I mean? We wanted a lot of stuff, when that was away, and now every time it's like, no, we're three, we're up to it, we're all the stuff, again, but. You know what I mean? It just. And our kids are different, the kids also didn't have cell phones back then, they didn't have all this other stuff. Jack, trees, these issues for them, so we need to be thoughtful for them. And it's not an attack on coaches. It's a pro athlete activity sort of thing, because we always talk about how it's coaches. Right, that's all we talked about last year. When is Joel get an opportunity to have these kids and not, and and take them out of the practice? Because that gets really difficult, because this is their co-curricular, they've gotta go to this thing.
A bit greedy on that.
Correct, I mean, in in and here's a kid, dude's coach is like, oh, you know what I mean? And here he is like, what am I supposed to do?
You know, and that is why he's pumping stuff to a a weekend.
Correct, see, but those are the things, instead of us as adults being like, hey, listen, I get that this kid has to be here. He probably doesn't have to be there any minute of this football practice. We can have him go twenty minutes, and I remember this when we first started, we, I mean, uh, Uplier. Paul Uplier, we leave to go to whatever, go to the play. I remember these things we used to do, and I see less and less of that. You know what I mean? And I don't know if it will never get it back, but. I don't wanna never get it back, it's expensive. You know, and the reason people are here is because they don't have the experience. You know what I mean, that's why a lot of people, because they get to have the Iowa High School experience. You know what I mean? Where you can do a lot of things, you know, and which is hard, right? But I think it's worth it to, you know.
So there's nothing we gotta go to all.
We were, right, because this was more from.
Right.
So we're just talking about this, love feedback, so then the next conversation.
Right.
Focus on that first. With the last part of that was added around um documenting and tracking throughout the year. The monetary purposes, and then we have a conversation about what we expect, what that looks like, and how that shows up on various different. More meetings and conversations that you haven't had here to give the time that is.
I have no problem with the policy, it's it's. Have to be adjusted. This is, but we're still working this as this.
Yeah, it's an hard one, it'll be on you.
You know what I mean?
I I think it's important of what was discussed tonight, as far as in what was said. A. Like taking Sunday, which is really the only day that works. And just eliminating it. Absolutely zero contact on Sundays is a solution.
A solution.
But you're saying, but it it clarified that that. That doesn't have to be the only solution, and it's up to coaches, directors, and sponsors to be part of. Developing, creating, or coming up with a solution other than total elimination of Sunday.
You validate that whether or not it's a solution, you have to say, okay, let's do some scenario.
Yeah.
That becomes eliminated, what does that do to the business schedule? What does that do? Well, how are, how are you folks going to now reformat?
And that was our fear, they're getting done at nine or ten at night from the gym, because there's only so many gym spaces or. You know, and there's so much activity stuff going on, it just gets pushed later into a evening, and it becomes nine and ten o'clock. That's my, I would love to have Sunday. Just a, a little bit of both.
So these kids are there till nine or ten at night, and then they've gotta be there for a cooking at six AM. When are they supposed to be homework? When are they supposed to eat? When are they supposed to sleep? What are, how are they, I mean, that, this is some of their schedules.
Well, which leads to my thing where you can't do everything.
Which I.
Yeah, one more facilities than we ever.
Yeah, so I. I'm okay with all of this except for the date. The the, the limited to just the school year to May first, I'm not, that doesn't make sense to me. The rest of it, I think, is good as long as we do. Figure out how to document and track and. Start forcing coaches and sponsors and everyone into some, figure out how. I mean, that, I think, feels like that would be Casey's wheelhouse.
So you're saying, you're saying May first.
Through the.
All year.
You're saying the first day of school. First day of school through the last day of school.
I know, but what we're saying is, the reason why we put May first is you're gonna have a bunch of games on Wednesday nights.
And that would be a purpose for an exception. How often is there gonna be a game on a Wednesday night?
The WAMAC plays every Wednesday in the summer, I believe, don't they? Zach, are you? Most Wednesdays in the summer, the WAMAC plays.
And so for games, you can't, you can't, that would be.
That's what Casey's saying, so if you're gonna have teeth on it, you're gonna have all these exceptions, right? And so that's where some of this.
If you don't have teeth on it, then they're gonna be like, wow, we don't have game, let's have practice.
Yes.
So to me, something, and if you wanna put it in there, or something that says, if it is a, if it's a scheduled. Event by some outside entity, then yes, they can do that. But all other contact on that night, all year long. Is off, unless it's a scheduling outside of a soul and. Something you don't have control.
Soccer and baseball, I I pulled up this year's May. Not on Wednesdays.
No, but I mean, just what sports are running?
It's May.
In May, May, that's.
May, those four things. Golf.
Golf.
Track, soccer, baseball.
It's all.
And softball.
Yeah, but like this year, golf, there was golf, that was in the morning. On May fourth, and then on the eleventh, there was boys golf, baseball, level two, they scrimmage Prairie High School. Baseball varsity, they scrimmage Prairie High School, golf, I believe, is during the day.
Okay, is this something that we just are like, hey, let's do a scrimmage? Does it count for anything? Is it a one hundred percent necessary?
And then golf on the eighteenth, and then there was a baseball game, and then.
So that's what you're saying, an exception could be the WAMAC scheduled events, but all other events.
Would be done by.
Will be done by six.
What's gonna happen if we don't have that scrimmage on that one?
I'm not gonna answer that.
Well, I mean, it's, but I mean.
Are we gonna like all of a sudden tank and lose every game after that? No.
No, I'm not saying that.
Right, I understand that people aren't happy with some of those things, but we're not here to make everyone happy and comfortable. We're here to not overwhelm our kids.
Did did the issue with our our clergy in town, did that result from? Um, eight, March and April? Or did it result from May?
This is how crazy.
Did it result from May?
This is how crazy it was. Their perception was, once religion was done.
Free game.
Free game, I mean, that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I remember, I remember that conversation with Kevin for saying, like.
Yeah.
Don't we have to be on hundred and six, oh, no, religion's over. Yeah, I was like, ugh, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And and so, I mean, it makes a valid point, you know, can you get your work done before six o'clock before the other school?
I, again, talking to Casey, and I think before you, we make a decision on that, you may wanna look at that practice.
Well, I agree, I mean, I'm just, but she makes a valid point.
I agree, but when you start getting into competition, we start talking about that first week of May, and you're taking. Again, I'm not saying doesn't make or break a season, you may just wanna look at, it's gonna pile stuff onto those kids in the morning properly, where they're coming in at. You know, whatever time.
Right.
You may wanna look at that and just see how the facilities were being used.
Right.
Because again, when we sat down, he's looking at all that, I don't have that in front of me.
What did, what did it look like in May?
But press. But the hard part is, what did, what did Casey choose? I mean, what did baseball do?
But that's not, but that's not all, that's, that doesn't include the practices.
Right, right, right.
Right?
Well, Tuesday might have been a track meet, and that's why they scheduled their prairie scrimmage on, so that they could have the track kids.
Right.
That's my assumption, that's what I'm, yeah.
You know, and the thing is, then.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
And we have plenty of nice coaches to chat with. Right?
Yeah.
You understand, and you see the problems we're at.
Yeah.
It was twenty years ago when I was in, the sport in season to presence, and when that was done, then the next one started. For sure with practice, but no competition.
Well, if you're getting to the end of track, right, it's a district.
It's a no brainer.
It's a no brainer, these are the, this is why I get this, right? Okay, everyone gets some crazy kids. These are the reasons, right? There's no reason they needed to play that baseball game. Right before the district track. It's pointless, right? Those kids are gonna run track the next day. Let's be, you know, nobody complains when your, when your athletes run faster, jump higher. You know, one game, the, and that's all I'm asking for. Let's have some concessions that go more points. If people would concede, this would be a moot point.
Right, and that's my.
And and the concessions have to happen, all the people that were at the meeting on that Sunday. Those are the people we need to concede.
Mm-hmm. I think.
We have track and, or we have cross country and marching. Those are at the same time, their cross country meets on Saturday, their marching band competition on Saturday. So typically, in years past, we've had two times, the two Saturdays that both happened. At the same time, they should do it, so there's me. Whoever's in charge of schedules that for cross country, I mean, I'm assuming whoever talked with each other. And they say, okay, this, this is our state marching band. Okay, well, we'll make sure that they're there for that, but this is another competition, not as big a deal. But there's a cross country meet, so, so we know that that competition, the marching band, we're not gonna score real high. Because half of our band's gonna be at a cross country meet. It's okay, we're okay, and they did agree for that, they just. Write a little essay or what, I don't know what they have worked out, but we're, we're okay. And and he's okay with when it's our state competition. And some of them are really great runners, but it's okay, because it's one meet. And it's a big deal for marching band, so we can work it out, everyone else should be able to.
But it's, it's, so, but I'm just saying, he's, a lot of the issues. Really wouldn't be issues if coaches talked to each other and just didn't assume things.
Right.
Right, and that was the biggest part of that whole thing, but instead, everyone. Doesn't want to get an inch.
Mm-hmm.
And those, I actually just rethought it a few. Think of our coaches, well, how are kids, like kids gave you a lot, now mid-air, superstar, and, but you may need that kid to get six rebounds and two points. To win his, some games, you know, and if he's, doesn't feel like he can, you know, he may lock down their best player. You know, and he may not shoot able to turn, you know, or he may help you win the game. You know, and and. And Chris and I, and Mike have been there for that. You know, and and those, I just think, you know, we have coaches that didn't talk to each other like that, you. You know, but I think we can do better. That's all, right? When the A D says he doesn't wanna get all the coaches scared because it's afraid of what's gonna happen. Then that sounds horrible. Right? That probably shouldn't be the way it should be. Right? I'm happy with the policy, I think we can look this better, that's the directive. Right? Because, just like you said, baseball and football are working together for the first time in heaven. Right? Or that's changing personalities, right, again, you know. Um, some people are gonna have to get, make concessions, and in-season should always stay in. Track in-season is not the same as baseball in-season. Tracks at the end of track, right, they're at their biggest part, you know how track is. They, this, this is the beginning, you know. And these are the things now, we're getting our work done. Think about kids and families, right? Oh, what if I don't go to baseball, I I might start, but if I don't go, I'm not gonna start, you know what I mean? Shouldn't they hear from the coach, hey, listen, guys, somebody's gonna be running the track on Tuesday. You know, this isn't gonna hurt you guys, I want you to go beat your tails off, and we'll come back.
See you at practice.
Right?
Yeah.
But to play on the other side, how many of those kids said, I wanna be here?
Right, well, that's fine too, because then you have to have the same conversation, like, I don't care about track, I do try to get better at football. And that, that's the, that's the same thing also.
Yep.
Right? But I'd rather see an athlete compete to go to state. I think that doesn't far matter than to go to a first level ex bowl, just as far as like him as an athlete.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Or as an athlete, sorry.
Let's uh. Let's move on, if we can. Come and discuss this further, and if we need to include something, or we want a little more information, I think we can definitely grab that and, and talk with Casey. Get what we need, so we need to look at practice schedules and what competition looks like, especially for that May first date, we we should give that a look. It's important, I mean, it it affects us all, right? We can care about these kids.
Absolutely.
So does the administration, Zach, I know, as I've been about this, it's a.
It's how, how we care is not a good question. It's just, you know, I mean, like, like, there's not a coach I don't care about the kids. You know, it's just, how do we balance that when there was.
Yep. Uh, you gonna see the. Full session?
I moved that more of the full session to pursue into Iowa code from one point five one.
Can you take a roll call?
Second, go to second.
Second, alright, take this.
In the rule, um, so you will say, yay, or maybe go into possession more.
Yeah.
Roll calls?
Yeah.
Toons?
Yeah.
Westa?
Yeah.
Brown is absent, it is seven nineteen, so can we take like a minute? And then I'll give the door shut and stuff when we go to possession.